Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Norwich AOE Museums Committee meeting today, Tuesday, the 5th of September. Firstly, can I just say thank you very much for the Tourist Strangers Hall that's just been arranged for the members. They're thoroughly interesting and we do appreciate you organising that for those who could make it. Right, so to move to today's business, Lea, if I could just ask you to let us know of any apologies for absence, please.
Yes, we've had apologies from Councillor Wright, Councillor Booth and Jamie Beaverton is substituted for me as of well. Other members may turn up, if not, they'll be noted with apologies in the minutes.
Great, thank you very much. We now move vote next to declarations of interest. Do any members have anything to declare? No, and so we can move on to the minutes. So for people who were present for the meeting held on the 6th of June, if I could ask, are people happy with that as an accurate record of that meeting? Yes, that's all okay, so we'll approve those minutes, thank you very much. Which means we now move to item four of this afternoon's agenda, which is the report for Norwich Museums covering the May to July period. So Stuart, if I could invite you to take us through this report, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Section number one, COVID infection control updates. It's very much as we were, there's been no changes in legislation regarding infection control. And so we're still using CO2 monitors to monitor oxygen levels within the museums. And also we've continued a thin regimes on hand sanitisation stations. And to be honest, I think that's going to be the norm going forwards across Norwich Museum, Dunbar Museum generally. And this is the norm now and will continue for the foreseeable future. Moving on to section two, Norwich Museum operations. Norwich Castle opening arrangements again, as we were, we're continuing to use the entrance door E8 as the temporary entry to exit route. But in order to get into Norwich Castle, of course, we have the ongoing works associated with the key works, Gateways of Medivaling. We've still got our pop-up catering unit in advance of our new retail, sorry, restaurant will be opening in the next couple of months. And we've still got a temporary retail offer within the Rotunda. Section 2.2, Norwich Castle ceremonies. The number of ceremonies taking place at the castle has remained very strong over the last 12 months. There's a breakdown there within the report, as you can see, looking back over the last 12 months. A total of 711 ceremonies taking place, which has contributed to 17,715 additional visitors to Norwich Castle Museum. We're seeing really, really healthy numbers, including actually August and September are very strong as well, which we'll put on very soon. At that point there, I'd like to stop. Before we move on to section three, is there any questions on the first section of the report?
I can't see anybody indicating, so Stuart, if you can take us through to section three, please.
In that case, I'd like to hand over to my colleague, Gemma Pittman, who is the new learning manager for Norwich Museums. If I take us through to the next section.
Thank you, Stuart, Gemma and members. First of all, delighted to be here, this is the first of hopefully many. I should probably start by doing a bit of an introduction to myself. So I've been working for the museum since over 15 years, as the western area learning manager. So managing Western Hall, Kingsmore, Storrs again, and the museum, and H20. Then when Karen left, Lion, Prius, Learning, as we've heard that, her duties were temporarily devolved to myself. My quality of responsibility is increasing area learning. So I manage the events visitor part of the museum, she's still stuck here. And now we've had service model review, now a chance for model of work with learning managers, that is in service to empower, to support its work in operations. So there's now one Norwich learning manager, one Norwich learning manager. I've taken over at Norwich and this is what the rest of it is. So the reason I say that is because it doesn't mean that I'm always recently fully timed and scheduled, so I'm sharing my duties between my role of the west and Norwich. Now I'm here full time, but I do have a pretty good idea of what's going on. So I should be able to answer most of your questions, whether or not I'm yet. So first things first, I'll give highlights of the report here, so it's quite relevant for the report, the learning activity. And maybe at the end I'll just make a suggestion, or just probably think about reports in future, I'll just go through the report. So first of all, we see from 3.1, work with nursery partnership. Now this is a critical part of work, one of the key parts of the activity plan, that's the activity plan associated and developed. Is to encourage our youngest visitors and their parents and parents to visit. And we work at the end of the pub, she's our, we're currently having access to learning at that facility. She works with early nurses, they're certainly much more advanced, so she'll be able to maybe give people who've got access to the museum services. She's been doing some very interesting people work with early nurses, as I've shown you, in the area of nursery education. This is to work with both the nursery setting, but also critically with parents and the parents of children. In order to try to engage with them on a number of different ways, so it's not just coming within the nursery setting. I will perhaps add more about this in the future, to get the visitors to more brush jobs. The idea is it's a sort of holistic approach, how we can work with a particular area, the young parents and that, in order to encourage arrangement of engagements. So this is really interesting to point out, this is the end of the first learning project, we're going to carry on that project in the future. Youngers are trying to build on it and we had a discussion, a very helpful discussion at the end, with their nursing setting staff. One of the key points that came up at that is to have the barriers, to the parents in that area who've got to visit in the museums. Obviously, one of those barriers is a financial barrier, but it's not just, it's a whole lot of other barriers. So one of my priorities coming in to this one now, to be trying to record that accessibility, trying to look at ways of kind of arranging barriers for people. So just wanted to talk about this thing. And there's an additional work that, as well as being doing about S E M D. And again, looking at the new ones, we've worked to try to engage with as many people as we can in different ways. So we noticed in 3.2, the spoke medieval sessions, it's teens which are great. So I think probably we need to look at the way we approach learning, because we've got a bit of a window before we open, so we can have a review of these things. So one of the things we're planning to do is do a learning programme review in this past window, that seems to suggest that that will actively present a bit more activity in May-June, when we're at it. So we've got a bit of a briefing space there of looking at this. So one of the things that I think Ben's been doing here is looking at different ways of kind of crunch work in this room. So this space has been a little bit of a challenge as well. Moving on to sort of conferences and masterclasses, well, obviously, it's very important for learning, for the logic of learning, you can see here, where we live, art teachers' masterclasses. A conference at Strangers Hall, which Frank Mills, anyone who's sure of knowing, was president there. And then A Level Conference in partnership with UEA, and that's the end of 3.3. Obviously, the link between UEA, working with UEA and working with A Level students is very important, why haven't we begun to see how that can step up in after year thirteen? And hopefully, taking a higher extension in the world. I just want to move on to 3.5. Again, so we're now working really the same thing, that access. And this is work with Rosamund Hewitt, who's our directorate officer, who's been doing with New Roots and Art at Work, a working with interest company. New Roots, as it says there, Norwich's charity supporting religions and sanctities. And again, in terms of engaging and trying to overcome barriers to getting to visits, she's got some tremendous effective work. First, we're going to act with New Roots North of the city and then proceeds getting them to come and visit to a couple of different museums. So we've been very positive when we've developed that relationship, been able to develop the funding from the activity plan in the areas of the front. But the family are developing from there. I would just also like to, Snapdragon, Snapminds on page six, it's just worth saying, one of the advantages about having a building and a great crane. Is if you don't crane what crane was happy to do, when you have newborns outside, they're looking for rays of lower. So you have a lot of opportunity to get Snapdragon, which is the older children who come into one of our early years rooms to go inside. The theme is, you see, there was three of these, so they met, the dressed up as babies, they met a baby outside and then the driver of the crane was happy to raise a lower. So hopefully, in a small way, we can do that. So summer programme, I will report about this more next time, but this is the overview of the work we've been doing. Summer based on the incredibly successful Gloucester exhibition. Anne McCarthay, who's a pretty good student of the Denial Tors, which is a priest at her post at the moment. She's developed a relationship with a partnership of our own life, we've had a very successful deal with them during this summer programme. Quite simply, they came to us and said, well, we've got lots of people at the coast know about the work of their online, we need to try and spread it around and we'll use you to help. So because we're doing Gloucester, it's the obvious links and stuff, simply. We basically, the partnership of our own learning, it's a very nice issue and a bit of practical work, which again, I think we will build on in the future. So come down and see their work again, with a range of different groups. And again, one of the things I just wanted to mention at the end, working at the museum of Norwich, working with the Danish, working partnership with the creative well-being group. And also their creative industries programme, and then also at Strangers Hall, both the City of Aisle, where the CEO opened the 100th, actually the 100th anniversary of the opening of the Strangers Museum as well as the Danes. Also, another important piece of work with my perspective was project Young Parents, which now we have done some commitments in the museum of Norwich and Thursday, that we've discussed, and also really to manage. To get the person to weigh, just try to make sure that we are as much accessible as we can within the limits of our management. So it was very brush jobs, I wouldn't ask for questions in the moment about that or anything else. And I just thought I would just raise as a, this is a thing for people to ponder for happiness. Obviously, I would be more than happy to go into a bit more depth about a particular thing in the future and leave the report for people to read. But then if you wanted to have more detail about our approaches for learning or early learners on a particular thing that's current, or maybe the key activity plan, that would be helpful, which is what I raised. If anyone has any questions on that, I'm also going to let someone kick the dust off, so if anyone has any questions on 3.1, I'll answer them.
Okay, thank you very much, John, for that. Nice to see you and to welcome you to this committee. Councillor Kidman, I think you had a question or comment?
Yeah, thank you, that was, I read the report with great interest and really impressed the range of groups and the range of activities. Particularly liked age fifteen, first item under 3.1. And the fact that the children made it in the museums and then they went away with certificates and a small gift, and so they remember their visit, that's their home. I've noticed then, obviously there are matters arising, that there was something in the minutes on page, it's page seven at the top. And it's a bit that's as part of the work of service, to look at which schools in the area were not as well engaged with the offer, looking to understand the barriers that prevented these schools, that opt on engaging in the moon. What's preventing them? So I was just wondering, you know, I'd like to get to the end of that date, but I just thought it'd be interesting to know what's going on in the background about sort of rooting out those schools that have kind of dropped on somehow.
That's really, so I think at the moment, I think my priority first was to get to reach with the learning programmes. So that's the intention, to do the review of the learning programme, so we can make sure that we follow best practice in museum learning. And also make sure that we're doing it as much, that is meaning about difference, you know, with all visits and potential visits. I think one of mine within that, what we need to be doing is looking at, so whilst Tessa, Nova, and I've got the topics, to look at exactly who is visiting, who's not visiting. Particularly interested in using something like free school managers, because of possible indices of which groups that we're getting. At the moment, I have feeling that we're probably not getting as many visits from areas which are, that's the only issue, so than others. And that's something that we really need to look at. And part of the view of the learning programme, we're going to make sure that we've got a model which we are confidently successful to learn. Once we can do that, then we can confidently go out, talk to, communicate with teachers from those settings and hopefully we can address. But first of all, I need to hear the statistical stuff, that I feel that there is quality in that stuff, but it's.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I don't think there are any further comments or questions. I did just want to go back to 3.3, the art teachers' masterclass. Just really to note, it's great to see the Norwich Freeman supporting that event, so I think we should extend our thanks yet again to the Norwich Freeman chairman.
Absolutely, of course, there's been support from the Strangers Hall.
Indeed, there's been a lot that's been done by them. Okay, if we move on to section four, John, I think you're leading this as well, yeah, thank you.
So did this, I'm actually seeing a situation report about the Kick the Dust project. The Kick the Dust project, which is really successful working over the last four years, is now moving to a different phase. So this report sort of represents a bit of the old phase and also moving into the new phase. I think the, the number of engagements we've had in the new phase, so new phase is supported by the Arts Council, not focused on working with libraries. So the idea is to take the lessons that we've learned from Kick the Dust about engaging with the cultural heritage and work with libraries, in fact, with Keatsman and the other place, it was a great album, wasn't it? So we're in the first phase of that. And so the numbers, the results, we've got so far, and so feedback is relatively low. At the moment, we're developing the relationships with the libraries to make sure when we start working with the libraries, the partnership is probably strong. And actually, we're working with many of whom are involved, or many of whom have got to make sure that we're confident that we can break down the right footing. So that's where we are at the moment, you can see from the, from the page of the questionnaires on it, and it's a very low level of responses. And the responses are positive, but it's very low, it's not what we're caused specifically, simply from wanting to win. But as the engagements carry on, it's always been, it's always been front end, back end evaluation, as well as evaluation during the projects, moving back to the round. Now, obviously, these ones are focused, this is a basis structure, but also it's focused more around satellite marketing standards effectively than, than Norwich itself. But we are carrying on with work with Norwich, in fact, we're going to have a meeting tomorrow, working with, a good company we've worked with before. Developing, focusing on the new framework and being able to help with the impact it. So this is a little bit of a work in progress. And that will, I think that will develop as we move in at this point in time as well. One thing I would like to just point the attention to, the new funding with, at some of the last, right at the end of four points, right at the end of the summer. So we're just about to go in with, as a result of the success of the Kick the Dust programme. We've had a round one, been accepted to work in partnership with one MCA Leicester on a much bigger, more heritageier future project. And this, I think, is a really good example of how the Kick the Dust project has worked and developed, effectively, like this stuff uses our project work skills to, to work with other heritage settings in the region. In order to encourage them to work with, you know, given the tools to work, they're going to follow similar models to Kick the Dust. So it's a really good example about how it's just sort of strengthened that place. Again, we're just about to go into stage one development process, so for those of you who may not know, that means a bit of seed money to employ an officer to get things going. From without evaluation, doing some initial work with a company, you know, to move to the stage two, which is going to be substantial work, which we hope we are pretty successful with, at that one, I think it's in 2020. So this will be like a river where we're just gathering information about what's working best, and this will work to the right for me. Of course, you might be interested in this.
Thank you very much, yes, I was going to say, if there are any comments or questions from any members? No? Okay, thank you very much for that. Stuart, if I could let you know to take us through to the next part of the report in the council room?
Thank you, Chair. So section five, Norwich Castle Royal Palace Reformat update. We've been working hard in preparation for the phase one pandora of the 11th of October, which is the everything except the Norwich Castle keep, which we call the personal area. And so that's coming on board on the 11th of October. And we're still, as it stands, we're still on line with the Easter 2024 completion and opening of the Norwich Castle keep. So 11th of October and Easter 2024 are our key dates. Recently, the installation of the internal steelworks structures of the keep being completed. And this represents a really significant step in the completion of the project, because it's actually now the form of the individual rooms that will make up the new look internal keep. And so now we're working with joinery and chemical electrical engineers in getting all of the services in place within the Castle keep. And as members may be aware, we've already had the installation of the WC block and the changing places room, which forms part of the new, behind the new cafe area at Norwich Castle, which is being used really, really well. So as I just mentioned, the changing places room in particular, we've put on, we've joined many organisations in getting ourselves on the map as a free and accessible place. Where people that want to use those facilities can, and they are being used regularly, which is really good news for the museum. Moving on to section 6.1, Museum of Norwich. We recently had a thread of connection created in response to our textile heritage exhibition at Museum of Norwich, which was very well received and ran from the 23rd of November to the 3rd of June. Curator Hannah Henderson had been working with the Art at Work CIC, which is a local nonprofit organisation that creates art-based projects to promote wellbeing and good mental health. This project, by the way, was funded by the National Lottery, the National Lottery Heritage Fund. And was very, very well received with excellent visitor numbers, which I will come on to later in the report. And subsequently, Art at Work successfully applied for a further three-year funding package from the NLHF. And the group will be based in the museum for the next three years, meeting with lots of eight weekly sessions three times a year. So that's again, a fantastic opportunity for the Museum of Norwich and excellent partnership working. Just a few snapshots, some of the events and exhibitions taking place at Museum of Norwich. So we go to the events, for our May half term holiday activities, start once again to inspiration from our favourite shoe collection. And ask visitors to consider what shoes can say about ourselves. And Kate Valiant from the Norwich Birmingham designed a shoe about you activity, which is a 3D painted shoe that could be decorated in a way that says something about you. And just in the report, there's some excellent feedback that some of the participants of that event gave, which was overwhelmingly positive, by the way, across all of the feedback. During the Refugee Week, Assistant Curator Beth Aldridge, who some of you would have met in our recent tour of Strangers Hall earlier before the meeting, it is. Joined up with people from abroad, from abroad team for an event forum. Beth had devised historic components and quiz using museum objects that demonstrate the influence of strangers in Norwich over centuries. Which included Norwich City Football Club and a book on Romsey Wells, well, sorry, the silk lining samples inspired by the 18th century weaving industry. Also in July, we were pleased to work with the Art Library Society and local art book creators, Bookscapes, to coincide with Alice, National Conference, the National Conference held before. Bookscapes curated an art exhibition based on medieval underground and inspired by the stories and connections of the museum. Moving on to page 28, just wanted to make reference to one section there. During July, we once again participated in the Norwich Lane Fair, whereby we opened the old shop and offered the Ketsra Bellem VR, whereby we welcomed 430 visitors in one day. I should also make reference that strangers also saw very similar numbers, which is fantastic. And again, I'll make reference to when we look at the visitor numbers and give that more context as part of the report. I just want to skip ahead to the new collections section under Museum of Norwich, where one item that we've been recently acquired was some coins that were held by Joy Burson during the bi-decorate of 1942. And I'm sure you all have read the report, but it's a fascinating story whereby, as a four-year-old, she was living in Northumberland Street and her house was hit by a bomb. And her subsequently collapsed around her and her precious money box that she was holding ended up melting. And subsequently, the coins within melted as well. And so we were really pleased that Joy approached us and wanted to give us special coins, because of the very, very special story that they had to tell. And so that's quite a unique requisition for, for Museum of Norwich. Moving on to section 6.2, Strangers Hall. Again, for Refugee Week, which is 19th to 25th of June, Assistant Curators Beth Aldridge and Claudia Musty from English Plus were interviewed for Radio Norfolk in their history of poems series. And the feature object was the pig dog that Claudia made as part of the joint project celebrating national dress and culture for Refugee Week in 2022. And Beth talked about the selection of dogs made by published Latvian displaced persons in the Wentworth, sorry, Wentworth camp in 1945, as are in the Strangers Hall collections. And again, some of you may have seen the little dogs, those who joined the tour of Strangers Hall, which is a fascinating collection. Again, just looking at some of the highlights, the final Refugee Week event was also part of the City of Aisle Festival. And three local brewers collaborated with three brewers from Flanders to brew four unique beers to celebrate the strangers of Fort Whiteline Festival, which is fantastic. And just skipping ahead to the Strangers Hall's centenary programme. The generous, the generous support of the Norwich Freemans Charity and Friends of Norwich Museums for the Strangers Hall 100th Centenary Programme. Has provided a welcome investment into external and internal displays and functional programming and imaginative activities, with three events aiming to maximise inclusion. And also, some of the game of the tour would have maybe seen the street front of the museum, which has been recently newly painted with eye-catching combinations of cut-out figures, iconic buildings and objects. Which was commissioned, which was commissioned with a designer, Hannah Broadway. This is in hope that we can make the front of Strangers Hall Museum look much more attractive. And try and use the objects and the playful work to encourage people to come into Strangers Hall from the street front, which, I think we all agree, absolutely is not representative of what is behind that street front wall. So it's very difficult, but what we wanted to do was something imaginative and creative that appealed to all ages and was indicative of, again, of. that appealed to all ages and was indicative, again, of the, of the collection and what lies beyond. And then finally, on page, uh, sorry, and then on page thirty-two, inside the museum, new interpretation panels use archive photos and documents from the early days of the museum, where they tell the story of the founding of Strangers' Hall by Leonard Bonnbrook, his magnificent gift to the city of Norwich and the opening of the City of Norwich Museum in nineteen twenty-three. They throw light on Strangers' Hall's pioneering work in the vanguard of the early folk life museum that was in the UK and the era, era of significant donations, including the Um, I'll stop there, Chair, and we move on to section seven. Again, just giving a snapshot of some of the, um, of the key points of, of the branch of museums. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Stuart. Um, are there any questions or comments from anybody? Um, councillor Birmingham?
Um, I have a parade your, of your own children, and, uh, I see they're out. Last week, I, I was at the castle and there were, it was, there were lots of children in that. And I wondered if this, uh, I'm going to describe, become a problem. You have a great children's place, you have a great number of baby in that toilet, you have a gents, and then you have a general, children appear in that, and I wonder if this has become a problem for, um, school trips and, uh, other times when there are children around for any other time, for that matter. Thank you.
Uh, it's been, um, a small problem, I'll be pretty honest, on, on our various busiest periods, but there's probably a good reason for that. One is that the, the ladies toilets have not yet been built on the ground floor level, um, which means that puts pressure on some of the other toilet spaces on the ground floor level, such as, uh, the, uh, the accessible toilet, which is on the ground floor level where we advise ladies to go. And the reason for that is that we can't, that build is part of the access that the builders need to use to get into the north-west corner of the key. So they will come online. The second, um, issue is that the toilets were supposed to be combined with the use of the original toilet, which are downstairs at the basement level. And those toilets are currently offline because, again, of the, the continued keep works are due to come back online in the next three months. So once we've got those online combined, going forwards with the ladies toilets and of course the additional above, um, that was part of the overall design in order to make sure that we could meet, uh, um, the, the needs going forward. So we are unfortunately in a bit of a halfway house at the moment where, um, when we're busy, um, it's not a real issue because we do have the toilets upstairs, but, uh, but people, of course, on the ground floor tend to want to stay on the ground. I hope that answers your question.
Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, councillor Shamira?
Yeah, thank you very much for your report, Chair. Um, I've got a couple of questions if I may. Um, the first one, and this showed my experience, the thread of connection, I was obviously delighted to read, and then you've got this extra three-year, um, worth of funding for this, this project. Uh, so the first one, my, my first question on this is, um, about Norwich's textile industry and heritage, because as I understand it, we're not basically, we're not one of the sort of Lancashire, sort of cotton towns. So I'm, I'm, I'm just surprised that this has been such a sort of focus, um, of what the, the castle museum has been doing. So maybe if you could elaborate a little bit, um, more on, on that face?
Uh, if, if I may, I think I'll hand over to Francesca, would you mind answering that question? And Francesca is vast in my experience in, uh, all things textile and Norwich.
Uh, then actually, it's, it's mainly been based at the Museum of Norwich rather than the castle. Um, and so I'm, I'm not, um, I'm paying much detail about this particular project, but I, I do know that the Art at Work Group, um, they are particularly focused on matters wellbeing related, wellbeing through sharing textiles and the textile heritage. And I would imagine that the, the funding will have been locked in relation to that because that has been incredibly successful. Um, the, the Norwich museums, the, the castle, the textile president exhibition a couple of years ago, plus Museum of Norwich and the Strangers, and the work they've done with New Roots and English Plus have, have used textiles for a deal in various different ways now, um, both looking at the existing collections and kind of having people make materials of their own. You heard about the new pig dog exhibition. And so we've, we've built up, I, I, I think, we have a body of knowledge and experience and kind of methods of exploration, which I suspect is what has entered this funding application. And I know the collaboration with Art at Work has been doing really well. I just, um, only today actually, that, um, they will be coming to work with us in the castle next year. Um, don't have details yet, but, um, we, we will be working with them, um, in twenty twenty-four. Um, I hope that helps a bit.
Yeah, thank you very much. So that does, sorry, um, I think it's a more contemporary sort of thing rather than that sort of heritage.
I think it could be both, perhaps.
No, sorry.
I think it could be both, actually. I mean, you can see a lot of textiles on display in, in, in different ways, and indeed in particular, Strangers' and Museum of Norwich, with the, the history of the weaving industry explained. And so, you know, they will have been able to look at the subject from a great many different angles. And I know we haven't got the hugest number of textiles on display at the castle at the moment, but, you know, the day is still being set. Um, but the, the anger, I think, is about making and doing it yourself and improving your wellbeing and together, it's a sense of belonging through making things together. And I think that's what we think the most, most of the Norwich project.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Best of luck. And I've got a second question, if I may. And I'd be interested to read about your, uh, collaboration with Lulud, uh, in Belgium, they make not only because some of the new base beers that I tried last, whenever it was, uh, about a couple of months ago, were very, very tasty. And, but obviously, what you have got at Museum of Norwich is called Strangers' Hall. Um, and I was wondering, are there any future plans for any kind of, uh, collaboration internationally in terms of sort of heritage or indeed any other collaboration internationally going forward, please?
Uh, I'm not aware of anything live at this moment in time. That being said, we're always looking for collaboration internationally. Um, and, and City of Aisle is something that we engage with annually, which has been really good, um, and has got some really good tie-ins to the continent as well, which is, which is fantastic. Um, but I'm not aware of anything live at this moment in time, but, but we continually and historically work internationally at the time. So, um, I can't give you specifics at this moment in time, I'm afraid, but, um, but it's something that we're always open to.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, councillor Oliver, next.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight the, um, new winners for Strangers' Hall and the fact that it's quite epic in general, even though going around the room, it's like in the time machine, you've got this document, maybe different areas in every room. So, yeah, just, uh, it does welcome people, as we were, um, having been to courtyard. And somebody was actually at the door saying, um, that no one's behind here. And so we're just reminding people, it's all about some heritage open days, and there's three, three emission days, so funders are returned, which they are coming in this, and we'll definitely take that off.
Yes, thank, thank you very much. It, it, it's a, a very good thing that, um, our museums are made accessible in, in that way. Um, thank you for that, councillor Oliver. Um, councillor Ward, I think you were next.
Thank you. I've noticed that public store of Strangers' Hall has recently changed its name to Strangers' and, uh, there might be some opportunity there for collaboration generally, simply available or something like that.
That's, that's an excellent idea. It's not something we pursue currently, um, but absolutely, it would make absolute sense for us to, uh, to wing together, I think, in maybe so, um, that's something that, that is something we need to pay.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there are no more comments or questions, um, I think, uh, Francesca, am I handing over to you for, um, section seven? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, well, as, as you would expect, the Gloucester exhibition is still keeping us all on our toes. Um, visitor love is still extremely strong. Um, more than sixty thousand have visited now. Um, and as it's, as it's the last week this week, um, it's been particularly active this last week. I, I did my last tour of the exhibition yesterday for most of U three A, and it's actually legal, so that can be good news. Um, there's been a whole range, as you, uh, as you'd expect, of associated events with that. Um, Chair has detailed the, um, summer holiday programme in his section of the report. In addition, we held the seminar to UVA, um, a summer holiday lunchtime talks programme and some one-off events, um, including on, um, August the sixth, um, a Black History event, um, which was a celebration of Jamaican Independence Day, which included a panel discussion and some live music, um, which was the first for us, I think, to have live music in the atrium, but it won't go well, so we might be needing to get in the future. Um, otherwise, there's plenty else going on. Um, I'm working currently on two exhibitions based around Turner. The first for Time and Tide opening this October, um, which is about bridges, crosses, constructions and connections. And for that, we are having one gallery of historic art based around Turner's Walton Bridges. We managed to borrow, um, sketches from Turner's sketches from the Tate, um, of the Walton Bridges and also sketches of Sepia in Yarmouth, which we visited in the early eighteen twenties. And the other gallery will be devoted to, um, material based around the building of the third crossing, which hopefully will be open in the gallery, so will, will be open for the exhibition. And so we're hoping for a multidisciplinary show, which should, which should appeal to various different audiences. And I'm also working on a larger scale exhibition for the castle for October twenty twenty-four, um, at which I'm hoping to explore the history of landscape art going side in hand in hand with the history of our attitudes towards nature. Um, so the mix of this, this historical and contemporary exhibition. Um, and that, I hope, will base around four, I've managed to borrow four different versions on Turner's Walton Bridges. Um, I'm still writing loan applications and I'm hoping for a maximum of seven Turner painters in one room, which would be good. It may be six, and I'm hoping it can be seven, I'm just waiting to hear about the last one. Um, so more, um, to come on, on that one soon. Um, other curators, um, there's been quite a lot of acquisitions in, um, in the offing of late. Georgia has just completed, I'm raising for a major acquisition, um, a really beautiful seventeenth century painting by Lacan Van Rice, uh, which, um, she got as a hybrid offer of the acceptance in the youth scheme, and that's just gone on display in, in the castle. Um, and it's, it's the first, with Rice's painting, that we've had in the castle, and it, I think it will win the eyes for my collections, because he was an artist who very influential on the Norwich sport and on Turner as well, and so that is really, uh, key thing to have. And we've been donated, um, thirteen other acquisitions of, um, works of art on, on, on paper via a request to the Art Fund, they've been allocated to us. And the votes in, includes some John Self Poplin drawings, um, Sam Warhammer, John, John Barley, Peter DeWitt, for various quite important key, uh, nineteenth century artists. So Georgia is categorically votes at the moment. Um, Rose Gray, curator of modern and contemporary art, um, she's working on a couple of different projects. The conceptual artist Mark Wilshire, um, is about to install, uh, an innovation or installation, you could probably call it either, um, in a, of five paintings, and that, that is going to involve surprising us by hanging five of my paintings upside down. And just, it's partly to just make you look new at where you are and what you're looking at. Um, so look out for that on, on the, the thirtieth of September. And in addition, she's working on a film commission, which should also be available soon, but which more details are being available soon and a couple of other projects too. Um, Kate, the curator of the Gemma Menken Museum, has, um, also been, um, involved in new acquisitions at the moment. Um, we've had two really interesting, um, new donations, and if they were, you, you can read what she's, what she has said, and we've got, she, she's been given, um, all the way from Australia, um, it, it's a regimental sergeant major who was in the Norfolk Regiment, who was a prisoner of war. And you've got his diary and a postcard that he sent to his mother in castle. Um, and at the same time, we've also been given a piece, um, a communion case belonging to a Norfolk Regiment chaplain, children's in World War as well. So we, we've been given two really, um, interesting and unique items. Um, Tim Pestle, uh, continues to work, um, every possible hour in the day, and then some, um, on the castle keep display. Um, he's, he's also been working on the redis display of the Norwich prison material and updating the displays in the British Gallery. And I think that's, that's it for my section eight.
Thank you very much, Francesca, for that. Um, I think, um, councillor Shamira, do you have a comment or question?
Um, yeah, um, you see, there's been a lot of the news about British U S and, uh, sort of patterns, so I don't know, come on then. Um, what is, um, sort of our, sort of procedures to ensure that we keep what we've got by city and make sure that it's properly documented and that it goes, goes in?
Well, we do, I mean, I'm only responsible for Norwich museums, I mean, our collections manager has a Norfolk wide unit as it were, which as far as Norwich museums are concerned, and, and the same is true, we document as we go along, whenever they acquire something, we can have, you know, we had a bit of key on it, um, to keep our keys very secure, we were just very cautious about who, who gets access to what. And I suspect it's, it would have been in an odd way easier when the wish was in because there's spaces that are much bigger, this is much more, I mean, probably more easy to sit in, whereas ours, we have swipe cards over there, I think it would be quite difficult for someone to do something similar, um, in our places, so they, somebody unfortunately managed to do there.
Okay. Thank you. Um, councillor Ward?
Thank you. I've just wanted to ask, but when the Gloucester exhibition is taken down, are there plans to put any of it in permanent to Time and Tide?
Um, well, at the moment, the, um, certainly the painting that you, that you can see in the report that's on loan from the Mounton Museum called Run of the Gloucester, the seventeenth century Dutch painting, which, um, that's going straight into Time and Tide. Um, I, I, I don't know about the objects at the moment, I think that they're possibly going to put some, but I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, to be honest. Um, I think plans are still being discussed. Um, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I, I know that they are, they've lost trust, people are looking for, you know, assorted outlets and for an object at home obviously for the objects, but I'm not party to what, what their plans are immediately. I feel I should, I don't know if you're on that.
Thank you very much. Um, if there are no further comments or questions, um, Stuart, if I could hand over to you for, um, section eight, uh, other developments, including the Sharn Hall.
Thank you, Chair. So works in the Sharn Hall courtroom to treat the outbreak of dry rot are now underway. Um, I'm happy to say that, uh, as of yesterday, the, uh, works to address the issue have started. Um, to begin with, we are having to install an awful lot of scaffolding within the courtroom and other areas, uh, which includes a bird nest scaffold, which means that the entire inside of the, the courtroom is being scaffolded almost to ceiling height, um, in order for the operatives to be able to get access to the affected rude timbers. Um, it was slightly delayed, it's taken longer than we would have hoped, and, and that was, uh, due mainly to the historic fabric of the building and the need for us to agree, uh, with, um, local conservation officers on a suitable methodology to address the issue. Unfortunately, um, as I think I previously mentioned, the, the timbers within the, the courtroom are affected just by everywhere on one side of the building, um, including both in the structural timbers of the seating area and also the structural timbers of the roof itself. Um, and so in order to be able to place interventions within the courtroom- And so in order to be able to place interventions within the courtroom that would allow them to take out structural timbers, they need to put obviously other things in place to support the roof. And so it meant that they needed to be able to get down to the ground floor level, the actual solid soil, in order to do the cropping, which meant needing to go through other historic fabric of the courtroom. But thankfully, all permissions have been obtained. I'm working with council planning colleagues and doors, and we've been able to instruct TC Garrett, who are the principal contractor appointed to do the work to start. I must say, that work started yesterday. It also encompasses work within the corner of our Costume and Textile Store as well, which is another side way. It's acting the other courtroom, which when we took over Shire Hall, used to be the Regimental Museum, part of the Regimental Museum, is now currently the Costume and Textile Store. The damp issues that creates the drought within the historic courtroom also have affected dampness within the other courtroom. And as such, we've been through a process of decanting all textile collections from out of that room. And as part of this project, we're looking to address the issue on that and fix the roof and all associated issues with that project as part of one bigger, wider project, rather than trying to deal with them individually. So that work is ongoing and will take, we anticipate, at least six months to complete. So I'll be able to update numbers in due course as that project gets underway. I'm pleased to note Norwich Castle's external lift has now been repaired. The broken glazing, which was broken, and we remember as an act of vandalism, has now been, the new glass has to be fabricated and installed. And we mount it in place with the use of the external tower crane that's on the mount used for the Castle Keep project. And so that is now finished. Let's move on to the section wider impact group. So since the start of the Get Way to Medieval England project, wider impact group was formed, or weak for short, as we call it, within the museum service, which basically helps to facilitate the museum and that particularly, sorry, facilitate the project. We've been particularly busy within that group, because as I mentioned previously, we're keen to have the Percival section come back online, handed over to us on the 11th of October. So what that means is, is that we're currently underway with our plan, it's for opening the new retail shop, the new admissions ticketing desk and ticketing systems, the restaurant upstairs, and all the work associated with that, but also other areas, like the reintroduction of the Benefactors Room, whereby weddings will take place again within the Benefactors, also various office spaces, and a brand new education activity room. I've put in the report a couple of photos there that gives an example of some of the work we've been doing. There's a couple of photos there of the decor of the new Castle Restaurant, some of the colours we're looking at, along with an example of the hardwood chair and hardwood tables and crockery. And apologies, they're not very big pictures, but you get a feel there as well that what we're trying to do is, the little photos that you see on the Castle Restaurant picture there, the black and white photos, what they are is we've got a vast collection of black and white photos of the castle from yesteryear, both in terms of the Victorian prison and more latterly of the Victorian museum, and then through the entire other museum until now. And what we wanted to do is, and those photos are not present anywhere within the castle. So what we wanted to do is make the restaurant an experience in itself, particularly for those people that come to the castle that may only use the facilities. Because going forwards, you'll be able to use the retail shop and the restaurant without needing to buy a ticket to come into the museum itself. So you can, so obviously it would be appealing to trade from the general, people of Norwich that not necessarily are going to be coming into the museum. And we wanted to make that an experience that tells that story of the castle through the ages. And not least of the fact that when you're in the new restaurant, you'll have a beautiful view of the Bygones Tower and the Castle Keep and be able to see that contrast to those old photos and how the castle used to look, including photos of when the rotunda area was actually outside. So originally as a Victorian museum, you had to walk outside from gallery to gallery. And actually, there were gardens in between. And if I go so far as to go further, we even had within our natural history collections, a Galapagos tortoise that once used to walk and live within those gardens as a Victorian museum and now is a permanent member of our collections on display, if ever in your passing happens to. So we want to tell that story. So that's what we've been doing. A lot of the decisions that were made with a lot of the kit you can see being installed, both in the restaurant and the veto, was part of working with various external contractors and lots of trips to other museums and to sites where we could really see the robustness of chairs, tables, and make decisions on things that were not only aesthetically pleasing, but would also stand the test of time as well and be durable and go to length, frankly. And so we're working with that. We've also started to roll out our branding of Norwich Castle. For those of you who visited recently, you may see that we've started to roll out the new branding across all gallery names, so above doors within the rotunda or sections such as natural history or fine art, started using that new branding and those new colours, which are all part of the rollout of the Percival and then following on from that, the Keep framework. Moving on to section nine, visiting numbers. I've made reference in the report to lots of the activities and events and exhibitions that take place across Norwich museums that have really bolstered the numbers. You can see what I've done is I've applied there the last three years for context and reference. And you can see at Norwich Castle, so far, this year, so we say for financial year, we had 46,872 visitors to Norwich Castle, which is a significant uplift on last year, bearing in mind that last year we were post-pandemic as well. So the 2021-22 years were of course affected by the pandemic, but also in confidence levels of people feeling comfortable in getting out and about and back into internal buildings. But this year, we have seen a significant uplift, as I say, and that is largely attributed to the Gloucester Exhibition. So you can see in July, 12,000 visitors against 8,000 last year, 10,000 against 9,000 in June, and 9,000 against 6,000 for May. It's been a really, really, really positive uplift and we're really pleased with that. The Museum of Norwich and Strangers Hall have also seen very, very good numbers based on exhibitions, but also the excellent lanes in July, where you can really see the benefit of that for Museum of Norwich in July, with an uplift of 2,000 visitors against 1,600 last year, and Strangers Hall, 1,185 against 635 last year. So across the piece, doing really, really well at Norwich museums year on year. And for Norwich Castle, we'll be looking to get back to six figures again for the end of this year, which we almost certainly will achieve, which is fantastic, given the disruption of the Keep project. We're getting back to some really, really, really good, healthy numbers. I'll just pause there. It's okay, Shell, I've got just a summary of some of our social media work that we've been doing, but I'll just pause there to ask if there's any questions before I do so, if that's okay.
Yeah, thank you very much, Stuart. Are there any comments or questions on sections eight or nine? Councillor Oliver.
Congratulations on your visitor numbers. That's really fantastic. Just to add, this is for the coming. I wanted to mention the Costume and Textile Department. I followed it through various iterations, and at least the conservatory at Carrowhenge. It would be nice, once in a while, perhaps, to have a report back from there, and if that was something that would suggest in your time in the past.
Absolutely happy to ask our curator, Ruth Baxby-Tuck, who's curator of the Costume and Textile Department, to come and give an update on all of the great work that is done with textile. As I say, most definitely, they've been very, very busy in having to decant what is an awful lot of textiles as part of the project, but absolutely happy for her to come. Perhaps we could do that as part of the next committee meeting. Francesca.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I do normally include a report with my curatorial reports, but this time I haven't because she mainly wants to just be in full time, if I can store. I also stipulate I want to detail about that. But yes, I do normally report what we're seeing in the next half.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. If there are no other comments or questions, Stuart, would you like to take us through the social media footage, please?
Thank you. I'll just give a summary of the social media activity from the period of May to July. We work with a company called HootSuite, who evaluate our social media for us. And I have lots and lots of pages of statistics, which I'll be happy to share with the committee for wider distribution. There's lots of good stuff in there, it shows all of the growth, et cetera, and the engagement rates. But just to give a summary of the report. As I say, we work with a company called HootSuite, that outline our Instagram, Twitter and Facebook performance of the three Norwich sites. And they do it compared to the previous three months, which is really useful. The figures for this period show that Instagram continues to be a key platform for growth and engagement, and that Reels are especially popular. #MuseumWeek gave all our social media platforms a boost in June, with our sites joining you with this international social media celebration. Norwich Castle appeared in the official top 200 list for galleries, libraries, archives, museums and artists, based on engagement with our content over the course of the week. And the castle actually placed at number 50, the second highest UK organisation on the list, which is fabulous. The Norwich museums also mark local and national campaigns on social media, including Volunteers Week, Refugee Week and Norwich Pride, which goes with reference within the report. Following the launch of the Museum of Norwich Instagram, the account has gone from strength to strength and now has over 650 followers. Their engagement rate was a whopping 12.23% during May to July, which as a guide, a good engagement is determined to be around 3%. So they're doing really well with four times that engagement. The most popular content continues to be posts around our objects or archive images. A post about an Anglo-Saxon Bracite received over 1,800 likes on Facebook in June. An archive photograph of Strangers Hall received nearly 200 likes on Instagram in July. Twitter feed has fluctuated during this period, which is in line with general trends, thanks to our major changes onto the platform and the launch of Metta's rival app, Threads, Sorry, Metta's rival app, which is called Threads. We will continue to monitor engagement as further changes are made, including the sudden rebrand of Twitter as X as of July 23. Sorry, July 2023. So as I said, I'm happy to, there's an awful lot of information in here, but it's all really interesting stuff. So I will share it with the secretary after the committee meeting for wider distribution.
Okay, thank you very much, Stuart, for that update. Are there any questions or comments on any of that? Councillor Schmier.
Yeah, just to praise the Norwich Castle Instagram account, I do always enjoy seeing your posts on there, so I'd like to thank you.
Absolutely.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yes, indeed, I concur with that. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to the end of the report. Thank you very much, Stuart and Francesca, for that. We've received a written report from the Friends of Norwich Museums. A link to that will be provided, and hopefully members will have had a chance to read that. And we've got as a representative of Norfolk Contemporary Art Society, Janie, if I could invite you, if you'd like to make any comments, please.
Hi. The NCS has got a very active course and programme of talks coming up. We've had a very successful panel in General Museum in Norwich School recently, and our auction week was held here in the Council of Javers. And we've got two major artists from the RA coming to talk to us next year. 2024, we've got Moni Rikaka and Molly Morris, which is exciting, so it's interesting to be well attended. And apart from that, we've been very active in the re-rotating of the Poiree sculptures, which we kept a good eye on, and working with the other art societies within the city to try and find ourselves a permanent art gallery exhibition area, which is not easy, but we have now a society with MRC, which is doing its best to see if we can find a permanent gallery space within the city.
Great, thank you very much, Janie. And yes, are there any comments or questions? No? In which case, thank you very much, everybody, for your time this afternoon. That takes us through all the business for this committee, so this meeting is now closed. Thank you.